All right, everybody. We've got a lot to do and a short timeframe. So I'd like to call to order the December 10th Dover Sherburn Regional School Committee meeting to order at 6:04 PM. I'm going to go first. Let me just quickly open up for community comments to see if there's anybody who has any comment. It's okay. Go on. No? None? We will move on. And I'm going to go to you all next. So I'd like to welcome, we're really pleased that you are all able to join us tonight. We'd like to welcome the Chinese exchange delegation to our meetings tonight and to our school and our lovely town. And we'd like to really thank the program leaders Rebecca Waterman and Janine Barrett. And you all have some things you'd like to share about the program?
Yes.
And introduce people to us? We'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. We'll take just a few minutes to say thank you again. I want it. Wyatt has seen Jack and Rita and Annie at school for the past couple of weeks. They are here with us and leaving on Saturday. And this is the 18th year of our program.
Yes.
And we have worked together this year to coordinate their visit with their host families and to do a bunch of different activities in the region and to be a part of the school culture as much as they can in a short time. And so we're grateful for your support as a community. And we are sending a group of students to Hangzhou in January. And so they have spent some time with Rita and Jack and Annie as well.
Three students.
Yes.
And Rita is staying with one of the students, Lyric Tai, who's going. And Jack is staying with freshman Nick Kubey. And Annie is staying with the Friars. And so the Friars hosted last year, but we have a few families that are still, even though they're not hosting this year, have been, you know, doing, they went, actually took, the Haynes took you guys bowling this afternoon. They went to Celtics game last night.
Aquarium over the weekend in Faneuil Hall.
Aquarium over the weekend in Faneuil Hall. And then over Thanksgiving, you traveled on a whirlwind trip to New York and Washington, DC, right after the Thanksgiving, so Friday after Thanksgiving.
It was a quick trip, but one of the reasons that we use this time of year as an exchange is to give our visitors a chance to spend Thanksgiving with host families, which is the idea of family sharing time together is not unique to us by any means, but in a slightly different way than what has been, what has been a part of their culture at home. So that's what we'd like to say. Thank you very much for welcoming us. And then Annie, if you'd like to say anything, something you've enjoyed while you're here, you can take a moment to address.
Okay. So I think first of all, I want to take some minutes to appreciate all what you have done for us. We feel greatly honored to be here. And although it is a little bit short, but it is a trip of, you know, full of warmth. Yeah, we really feel just like families to be here. Yeah. Not only the host families, but all the schoolteachers, students, and work staffs. Yeah, they are so friendly to us. Yeah, we really appreciate that. And secondly, I think this is a trip full of, you know, reflection from my aspect because I observed a lot of classes here and mainly language classes and history. And I'm really impressed by the teaching and learning style here. And I really appreciate the way of learning and teaching here. And I think maybe when I go back to China, I will, yeah, I will just, you know, improve my teaching style. Yeah. And lastly, this is also a trip full of experience, although it is very short, but we experienced a lot of activities and especially the culture in Boston and America. And I'm really impressed by the Thanksgiving festival, you know? Yeah, Thanksgiving Day. And actually, originally, I thought Thanksgiving Day is for, you know, it is originated because of some, you know, when the first Americans came to this land and they want to thank, maybe thank God or thank the natives here. But after I stay with the host family, I think maybe it is more like a festival of family reunion. Yeah. And families all get together and express their, you know, cares, their love of each other. So it is really, really a good experience. Yeah. So I just cannot think about a, you know, suitable way to express my appreciation and thanks to you. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jack, if you can say your name, maybe your name in Chinese and your age and something that you enjoy studying.
My name is Rita and I'm 15. I'm very glad to go to DS School to spend these three weeks. And thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack and I'm also 15. And I'm very glad to be here because this is a chance for me to see different study styles. And also because I'm studying in international school, so I will go to college abroad. Maybe you might say I would. And I want to thank for each other because you are really friendly.
Thank you very much. And if you have any questions at any time, we're happy to, Janine, I'm happy to respond and.
Or if you have any questions now.
Yeah, for these guys.
Yeah.
Can I just make one comment? I have, we were really fortunate about eight years ago when my son was a freshman in college, or in high school, to host one of the exchange students from China. It was a marvelous experience for our entire family. We are still in touch with our exchange student. And he is now in a PhD program in math at Oxford University in the UK. So yes, it's a good stepping stone to go to college abroad coming through this program. So, but I just think it's such a wonderful, wonderful program to expose our kids to, you know, in both senses. So thank you for all the work you do.
I'm glad you're still in touch.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a great program. It's the envy of many schools. It's really difficult to get an exchange program embedded the way we have at Dover Sherburn because of the distance. But the commitment is clear by the communities of Dover Sherburn and Hangzhou. We really value it. It's important to us. Just the way, Annie, that you described that it impacts your teaching, I think that John has been to China, I think Beth has been to China, and I think they would both say the same things, that we learn so much from each other. And to that end, we've sent our whole administrative team, building administrators and assistant superintendent to Finland because we do value learning that. So it's a great, great relationship. We appreciate that you guys have maintained it in the absence of Becky Vizelis. It's the founder. And may we continue on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And as they're getting up and going, since we need to keep moving, unfortunately, I'm going to ask, I assume Wyatt, you'd like to go, unless you want to stay with us for the evening.
No, I have a few things to talk about for our, just a few. So for our student council, we had the Spirit Week, the week, the full week before Thanksgiving break. And that was pretty fun. The seniors won, so that's always a plus for them. But more importantly, we raised $4,000 for our charity. And that's the most we've ever raised.
That's great.
So it was really nice. And the charity was also, the charity was J.B.'s Keys to DMD. I don't know if you've ever heard of that, but it helps one of our members on student council, her brother, so, who had Duchenne muscular dystrophy, which is a really nice cause. And then lastly, going forward for student council, we might be planning on doing a Christmas tree gifts for the needy, which we do most years. So that would just be student council members choosing a gift for a person in need and bringing that in. And then we would, well, members of the high school, and then we would facilitate that to get that to those who need them. So that's what we're going to do.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, John.
Yes. So certainly can answer any questions that I put forth in my report. But I did want to just take a minute to acknowledge that today we began the transition of Mary LaCivita, who's going to be retiring at the end of this week. Tracy DeFlamino came in today. We're really excited to have Tracy on board, but it's certainly bittersweet. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge all the work and dedication that Mary LaCivita has done for me these past seven years, but even more importantly for our district for the last 15 years. Mary started off as an administrative assistant in the guidance department. And when I came to Dover Sherburn, we had a transition and Mary applied for the administrative assistant position. And it has been fantastic working with her. She's an absolute gem. She has a tremendous sense of humor. She's highly competent, loves the kids. The kids love her. And Ms. Cruz in the main office, and she'll be sorely missed, but I'm really excited for her and for her husband, Russ, as they retire to Cape Cod. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my appreciation and gratitude for Mary.
Thank you. Yeah, she's definitely one of a kind.
She's been a huge contributor over there. You can tell by the many messages of support I know that she's received.
Yep.
It was quite a get-together, which I'm sure she didn't want.
No.
And people are really going to miss her over there.
Yeah.
So please pass along our appreciation as well, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did anybody have any questions for John based on his report? I have a quick one from last time, from our last meeting. When you talked about the proposed, the changes to the high school, proposed changes to the high school schedule, and you were sort of talking about that.
Sure.
And then Andrew mentioned in his report that this month, potentially that'll be rolled out next in January?
Yes. What we will actually be doing, yes, yes. So I have a planned meeting with Dr. Keo, Ms. McCoy, to go through what we came up with as for our high school schedule. The structure, I can tell you, will stay relatively similar, but we are talking about having some additional flex block opportunity. And with that flex block, we'll present lots of different opportunities for us to look at doing things differently. And it may also help support our transition for dismissals, for after-school activities, for extra help, for advisory, for team and club meetings. So certainly in the January Regional School Committee, I'd be happy to give more of a full presentation. I just want to run by the final ideas with Dr. Keo and Ms. McCoy.
That makes sense. Just a really quick question. When you were sort of sharing some of your thoughts about things, talking about flex and understanding all that, I was just wondering if there's an impact on athletics or if there's been a look at athletics also? Because I think it's a great opportunity to think about, for the academic day, it's exciting that we can try all sorts of new things, to be innovative. Have you been thinking about ways to innovate or potentially change or address some of the issues?
Sure.
From the athletic side?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, you know, some of it were beholden to our league and our league schedule and that type of thing. But in terms of dismissals and also in terms of practice times and in terms of contact hours and those things, we actually have a subcommittee that is looking at extracurriculars, which include the drama program, athletics, and any clubs and activities. So it's certainly something we're looking at. Emily Sullivan sits on that, and she will be an integral part in some of those decisions moving forward.
So can I follow up on that?
If I could just throw out that I think some of that is just by design a little bit behind the school scheduling, right? That needs to kind of be locked in.
Essentially has to be, right. So the schedule has to be finalized before we then know what steps we can take for any after-school activities. Because the day-to-day in school should drive some of the things that happen after-school hours.
So to follow up on that, I know that John has this rolling around in his head and has had many conversations with Emily and likely Jeff Herman in terms of performing arts, but especially with the scheduling of athletics, we now know that with 45 minutes fewer of daylight potentially.
Right.
Through this change, that the schedule has to be looked at more closely. So for example, Emily, as she's building the schedule, which the A.D. does every year with the other A.D.s, as they're building that schedule, she can make her requests that, for example, her furthest meets be, or games be scheduled for the front end. She can ask. It may not be granted, but it certainly would be on her mind. So that's something that's hugely important.
Yep.
Because as you set up the schedule, you don't want to make those decisions after it's already been set. So this is, this process of us looking at these things and talking about the schedules and our after-school activities is bearing fruit, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It is. You know, and in some cases, it's going to force us to change some of our venues and facilities. So that's also something that we need to be looking at. And Emily has already started having those conversations specifically for off-campus swimming, track, hockey, those events where it does require a lot of configuration, not just with us, but also with other schools that use those same facilities.
And there is a chance that, because you've said you don't want the, you want the practices ending at what time, John?
5:45 at the latest.
The latest.
Right.
And so, and is that the time they end now?
No, now, most of them end more like the 5:30 range, 5:15. Depends. You know, winter will be different, and it has to be different just because we're using different facilities. As I said, you know, hockey, we have to go with what is available to us by outside venues. Basketball, we have five teams that use the middle and high school gyms, but also we have an intramural program at the middle school, so we have to fit that in as well. So sometimes they have to go later than that. So winter, that changes. But we're talking about fall and spring where we want to try to have students off those fields in a reasonable time. We may have to look at increasing our time in which we do use lights at certain points, late in the season and also early spring.
All right. Thanks. Just really quickly, I wonder if the TVL, is more schools are making changes? If that's something that the TVL is also, as a league, is truly more for Emily?
Oh, yeah. No, they're talking about it. But, you know, keep in mind, right now, there are really three, you know, and we've got 12 schools. So we're still more the exception than the norm, but that will change over time and we'll see, you know, more schools. Ashland really kind of took the lead. Holliston will be looking at the change. We will, Medway has an 8 o'clock start, so it's a little bit more of a shift and.
Doesn't Millis already have a later start? Already, I mean.
It started already.
Yeah. Thing with Millis is they're also a smaller school, so they don't offer the same number of offerings that we do. So in some cases, it's, the comparison's a little trickier.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I look forward to that in January. Do you have anything else to add? You're good? John?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Beth McCoy?
I'm happy to answer any questions about my report. I would just like to reinforce how powerful the Beacon Academy Symposium was. Kate Potter was there as well, and I'm not sure if you'd like to share anything. But I think, you know, in our work around cultural responsiveness and thinking about our instructional practices, is a reminder, at least to me, that, you know, just as we look at our teaching and learning, a one-size model doesn't fit all, and that we have to consider the different kinds of learners we have in our class. I think the same is true for our student support model. And we really need to be more thoughtful on the supports that we provide to certain populations of students. And I look forward to, you know, continuing to work with the leadership team and our K-12 support team on how we can better do that. Kate, I don't know if you want to think, have anything to add?
Yeah, just off the top of my head, it's always an amazing day, and you hear a lot from the students themselves, the current students at Beacon Academy and alum. And I think it was, it just was really important to them to have their voice heard. And then the, it's a very small program, but the staff was able to change, to address their different needs. And one thing that several didn't, several different students said that struck me was feeling like they had a home base or a teacher who they trusted. And I know that was something that has come up here before, making sure every student has at least one person in the building, doesn't have to be even their teacher, but someone they feel they could go to. And that really struck me because they talked about that a lot too. So just thought maybe we can keep talking about that.
Yes. And I know the high school's been doing a lot of work around connectivity. It's one of your school goals, right, John?
Correct.
Yeah. And it's also going to be a consideration, I think, in the X-block rollout, the flex block and how you use that time.
That's correct.
So I think that'll be a good avenue to address that. I also want to congratulate the middle school drama program for their production of new series. It was fabulous. There was this special Mr. Davis who had a lead role, who was absolutely outstanding. So congratulations to Amy. And I'd also like to recognize our faculty, many of them facilitated workshops on our full-day professional development last week. Despite the weather, we had a great day. And I will be sharing more about that, the details of what they presented and some of the feedback when they come together as a joint committee, since it's a pre-K-12 program.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to take any questions or feedback.
Question?
I appreciate your report, though. I really do.
Thank you very much. All right, Andrew.
So in the, in the spirit of moving this along, I will be speaking to the joint school committees in January on the communications task force and the Sartains task force, a more detailed report from both of those. So I'm really not going to get into that unless you have questions in that regard. I mentioned the new ed reform, the education funding reform in Massachusetts, the Student Opportunity Act. I hope you have had a chance to look at that. It's a pretty big commitment by our state to funding education. The way it will probably impact us is in the realm of perhaps some greater support for health insurance costs. They're acknowledging that the rising health insurance costs are taking a huge bite out of people's budgets. The special education transportation and, I'm missing one more. Well, it's in, it's in the, yeah, the out-of-district transportation costs. Those are kind of the big ones, but you saw the link there. It's worth reading about. I just want to thank John while I have the chance for the Mikey Fallon presentation. I know Ms. McCoy mentioned it as well. You know, it's not easy to bring in speakers and meet everybody's expectations. I know that, having been a principal. It's really difficult. You bring a speaker in and invariably, some people like it, the person, and some people don't. We, at the central office level, were impressed with the fact that John and Scott and Ellen Shagnan and the counselors worked together to have Mikey come. Talked about really tough content for kids, mainly being that they all carry their challenges. All kids do. This is nothing new, but sometimes in these really competitive environments, it's tough to talk about that. And so speaks to what you were just talking about, having someone to talk to. I think Mikey really hit a chord with the kids. He's been doing this for a while. I actually heard about Mikey Fallon from my own daughter, my oldest, who had heard him probably in 2006 here at Dover Sherburn. And she recommended that I bring him out as a speaker when I was the principal in Medfield, which I did. And then he went to Wellesley two times as well. He is a really powerful guy and clearly had an impact on the kids. And I appreciate the teachers also and the counselors spending time and processing with the kids with what they heard. So thank you for doing that. And then just one last point. You know, we're at that, almost at that third mark in the year. You know, the fall sports season is over. We've been through a couple of productions from performing arts. We've had some important ceremonies, some honor ceremonies, acknowledging our kids. Our athletes have done exceptionally well. And I think it's really important for us to stop every once in a while and appreciate what a great school system we have and how much success that we have. It's the fruit of our labor. It's the fruit of the labor of the kids, of the parents, of the teachers, of the administrators, of all of us, of the school committee. And so I want to congratulate everyone on a great first third of the year. And that's about it. Unless you have any questions on my report.
I did want to say, I really appreciated you writing that last paragraph from your report. I thought that was really great. Nice. Thank you. Okay. Warrant report.
That's just for your review. The warrants that have been prepared and are for signature for your committee member for the month. I mean, as always, the warrants are in our office if you'd ever like to come look at the details.
That was awesome. Thank you. All right. Back to John, the proposed changes to the program of studies.
Yeah, so I know that last time, I believe you had an opportunity just to see, you know, what some of those proposed changes would be. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think some of the biggest ones really are the addition of some new electives, the addition of an advanced placement computer science course, a new course that will exist in wellness, the wellness department with regard to nutrition and looking at developing programs for students, athletes, non-athletes, really just a life skill. We're also then looking at adding honors component and putting onto the transcript some of the courses in some of our elective areas that in the past have not been designated so. And we had a lot of long conversations at Academic Standards about this. And it was felt as though these courses should be included in the GPA for students, particularly for students who take great pride and work incredibly hard in these rigorous courses. I have to give credit to a senior girl who had a really very impactful meeting with me about it and talked about the importance of honoring that for students in the future. She understood that some of those courses were not included now, but she had really hoped that they would be for the future. And I had the pleasure of telling her at a sit-down briefly this week that, you know, a lot of her efforts and work resulted in that change. And I think that that's a prime example of student empowerment, where she presented a great case. I presented her case to Academic Standards. We talked about it over three separate meetings, and there was agreement that those courses should be also included in the GPA for students.
Okay.
Are there any other, you know, specifics? I'd be happy to answer them. Some of them are just, you know, minor adjustments, updating particular dates. We have seen some success with our virtual high school program. Kids are enjoying that. It's going well. I see that continuing to grow as kids learn more about it and as they have experiences or share experiences with siblings or with peers. I also know that we added a course called General Contracting, which is really kind of neat. It's almost a project-based learning course that I could see some similarities to our visit today to New View in Cambridge, where a student, this would be their third year of the course, they would be able to take a concept and bring it from the thought process to the developmental process to the trial and error process, all the way to a completed project. And it would be something that would benefit the Dover Sherburn community. So we're excited about that course as well.
That's great. Question?
If you could talk more about the GPA related and maybe kind of bring us back, the GPA-related changes, but bring us back to the rationale behind having.
If you could talk more about the, the GPA related and maybe kind of bring us back, the GPA-related changes, but bring us back to the, the rationale behind having any courses excluded from GPA?
Yeah.
And then the, kind of what, what is the specific rationale for these courses versus a whole host of other courses that may or may not be rigorous, where students may have their kind of particular strengths in those subject matter areas, but still wouldn't have the benefit of...
Yeah, correct. So it, it really comes down to balance. And so some of those, some of these were pre-AP or honors level courses. And in the case of some courses that are currently considered college prep courses, we also did not want to deny students an opportunity to try a course and perhaps not have it negatively impact them from a transcript. Our, our students are very focused on the transcript and the GPA. We're working with a goal of moving away from that, you know? And that's going to take a lot of work and a lot of education. But right now, that's what, it is what it is. And, and we have to also play by the rules of colleges and universities. So we're sort of in this tough spot. We had a lot of conversations about that. And actually, some of the elective area teachers actually pointed out and said, we want the kids to try these courses and to have experiences with these courses without it negatively impacting them. So for example, if a student decided to try winter survival or if they wanted to try, a prime example was guitar. You know, if they struggled with it, we didn't want them to be negatively impacted by having tried something. So it was those courses there. We've talked about wellness courses. And we look upon and value the wellness courses, especially in the new reiterations that they've developed over the years. But we also feel like our kids are under immense pressure as it is. And if we continue to add courses to the GPA, we don't want it to have the negative effect for students of having them watch every single thing that happens. So we're, we're in a difficult situation where if we do include everything for some of our kids, and we actually got feedback from kids, they said it would be one more thing that I have to worry about with my GPA, if it's a wellness course, or if it's a music course, or if it's a, for example, if it's, you know. But we also have talked about the options of kids opting in or opting out. But keep in mind, that's more complicated because that's a GPA that is determined by Aspen. And we would have to have the parameters set up for that. You know, that's a metric that we'd have to ensure that we could make those changes. We'd probably have to receive additional funding to pay for that through Aspen because that's not just something we can change on the fly. So that's...
You can't change on the fly because...
Because anytime...
Somebody opted out.
Right. If somebody opted out or in. And also keep in mind, when we add a new course and we provide it with being in the transcript, you still have to archive all the prior ones because there still has to be a record of that. We're keeping that transcript going. So right now, the, the teachers of those elective areas were comfortable with moving ahead with these courses because they felt like these were courses that students specified in as opposed to the elective experience. There was some hesitation by some faculty members when they surveyed their students, that students felt like if you make all the electives part of the transcript, it's actually just going to add more pressure to us.
It's a, it's a, this is a complicated topic because if you think about it, if I could just interject for a second, Michael, there are school systems and, and top-tier school systems who are saying, we need to blow up the GPA. Unweighted, no more GPA. I have been through that discussion and it is a really controversial topic. And I don't really think the appetite is, is really there for Dover Sherburne.
Not right now.
Maybe at some point through further discussion, through some of our work. But to me, the, the benefit of identifying some of these courses is we're actually getting some of the benefit of what Beth has spoken so much about, that the student empowerment that's involved in some of these hands-on courses is in fact what we, we want for our kids. But unfortunately, if they don't get the weight on their GPA, they, they may not sign up for these classes. They'll just take ones that impact their GPA.
That's correct.
So the only kids who would be really invested in taking it would be the kids who aren't as concerned about their GPA. We want all of our kids to be interested in these courses and to experience these hands-on courses. Otherwise, they're just going to load, load up on courses that, that have the weighting.
But then, under that rationale, why add any of these? Because, because you might have students who say, well, I'm not going to do the astronomy thing because that's a big risk to my GPA because now it's included. I can't opt out and take it because I'm very... And don't get me, I'm, I, I'm very much in favor of thinking about the, kind of the student motivation and encouraging students to, you know, take risks and, and to, to get credit for areas that may be a little bit kind of off the, the, the prime track, but that's their real kind of strong suit. That's in their wheelhouse. And, and so I love the idea of perhaps having an opt-in, opt-out upfront, if, if that's possible.
Right.
My concern is that, is that it almost, it seems to me, and maybe it isn't, but it almost seems like it's a, a picking of some select classes that might not be reflective of comparative rigor. And I'll use, for example...
Except if you look at like mathematics, you look at world language, you look at history, you look at English, they're all in the GPA, regardless of their level.
Like, I guess I just want to put it, like, with all due respect, and I do appreciate it, like, you know, I, I have a great deal of respect for the academic standards committee that meets and deliberates about this for many hours on a regular basis all during the school year. And so while I might have an opinion, like, I, I don't want to hijack the whole evening in terms of, there's a group that actually worked super hard on this for a long time. And I respect that they've been thinking about, I don't think it's arbitrary.
I don't think it's arbitrary either.
So can I, can I say, I think though, that this is, you're getting some really good questions that I think are going to take longer, are part of a bigger discussion about GPAs and how we weigh things and, and which is part of a much bigger discussion that we're clearly not going to address tonight. It's, it's probably, it's been continuing and it will continue on. So if it's okay with people, I would like to seek a motion to accept the proposed program of studies for 2020, 2021.
Proposed changes to the program?
Proposed changes to...
The program of studies.
So moved.
Wait a second. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All right. All in favor? Opposed? All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I apologize for the relatively full agenda and short timeline for this evening. And I think that's something that should, we should continue in the future. Really quickly, we've got the monthly report. Dawn?
So your monthly report, the new piece of information that is included is that we have encumbered in utilities and projecting right now about a $75,000 savings. Obviously, it's very early in the year. We don't know what the, the winter's going to be like, but that's our, those are based on prior year usagees. Other than that, I've sort of repeated the, the variances, descriptions from previous reports, just to keep it running for you. You also have included your special revenue and revolving fund statement as of November 30th. I try to outshare that with you quarterly. And there are notes after the side with some additional information. So if anyone has any questions on those three reports, they're happy to.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. The fiscal year 2021 operating capital budget, Andrew?
Yes. So, so you received your, your budget books for FY '21. So you know, those of you have been through this experience. It's a, it's a fairly drawn-out process. We don't jump in in early December with everything all complete. This is really just the, the starting step. And as always, our budget's based on the guidance from Dover and Sherburne. We have not actually writ-, received the formal written guidance from Dover and Sherburne, but we have gotten verbal guidance in Sherburne of, similar to our last year's level funded with 2% for salaries. And Dover, level service with reductions were feasible. Again, that's consistent with what we've had in the past. We have discussed with Sherburne the roughly 1% increase in the assessment due to enrollment shifts. And it's our understanding that, that that's being incorporated into their model. With regard to enrollments, we've done a 10-year historical average, which is about 1,182 for the region. And our five-year projected average is 1,176. So, and our projections, our five-year projections, our three-year projections, our model, I think, has really proven pretty effective and, and pretty tight. So we're, we're, although we're seeing some swings, and we will reallocate if we see a swing that, that's potential for us to reallocate. And we have in the past. That's, that's, that's how we handle those. But we're seeing our numbers enrollment, in enrollment being relatively flat at the moment. No big swings. I've asked Dawn to kind of speak to some of the other budget drivers.
Right. So on salaries, it's, this is the year where we don't, we're holding a reserve for every employee who's in your, your budget right now because everything is currently being negotiated. So we build a reserve, as you'll see up in that reserve. Along with that reserve too, is also your transportation reserve because as I've advised, mentioned, as I have mentioned, we're sending our, our transportation bid out in January. So we are putting a reserve in that pool for that also. Back on salaries, the current budget does include a couple of things that we know are going to happen. And that is, we're absorbing 100% of the salary costs of the bridge counselor. As you know, we had a three-year grant. The three-year grant runs out this year. So we are fully funding that position going forward. So that's been incorporated into the budget numbers you have now. As well as, as you remembered, last year, we added one and a half adjustment counselors. But we were able to not increase your budget as much as, as that would cost because we had a adjustment counselor on maternity leave. So we're picking up the addition of that salary also in fiscal year '21. So those two numbers have already been incorporated into the budget that you were able to review. We're in the process of looking at some minor staffing needs at the high school, but we still want to continue to review that. On top of that, know that we do know of some retirements, but we do not roll those out into your budget until after February 1st because up until that date, those retirements can be rescinded. So we're looking at those two pieces taking place together, probably when we talk at your first February meeting. Those are the things. As I said, transportation, I'd just be prepared on that to see the first year out after your five-year contract ends when you see a substantial increase. So we do plan on seeing that, knowing that you saw less than 1% for the last two years. But that's just the beauty of that five-year contract. So just keep that in mind. Another cost driver for us, obviously here at the region, is healthcare. As we typically do, we're using a 10% projected increase on premiums. At this point in time, we do not get our new pricing until mid-February. And so it's usually that, that late February meeting that we have right before our joint meeting with the two finance committees that we're able to actually have the rates and incorporate whatever we need. 10% has been a good guide for us. Last year, the rates ranged from six and a half to eight and a half. So 10% hopefully will cover whatever comes. As, as you can see in your current year report though, we're carrying about $140,000 positive variance in healthcare, which will help absorb some of that cost. That's why you don't see as large of an expense increase in your line item because we're taking advantage of that, that positive variance from this year. Just to highlight a little bit on your assessment calculation, and then I'll just quickly run through each of the tabs, just so you know what you have in your book. As Andrew mentioned, we are, well, we know that we have a little bit more than a 1% swing in the assessment. So we were able to communicate that to Sherburne and they were going to incorporate that into the model so that we weren't having to come up with that 1% swing. So 1% swing in your budget right now, as it is, is about $220,000. So that is good that they're working that into the model because that would mean we'd have to come up with that on the Sherburne side, based on their guidance, if they didn't incorporate that. On your capital percentages, you'll know, we are still accumulating the private school data. So we will be updating that for you in January when your preliminary capital report comes out. Right now, the only piece of your budget that's based on last year's assessment is the little bit of debt. So that $900,000 of debt is being spread using last year's capital numbers. But that's, that's not going to cause a huge swing in your operating budget. Just looking through your book, so you have a detailed line item of every account that's in our general ledger that supports the budget. So you're actually seeing everything that builds up the budget. So it's more detail than you see on a monthly basis in your status of procreation. And we try to give you as much detail as we can on why there's changes, either positive or negative. The other thing you have is a detail of what makes up your technology supplement line item for both the high school and the middle school. I'll just point out on the middle school that we plan in January to present a pilot program for a one-to-one at the, at the middle, at, in some form at the middle school. So that's a placeholder in the budget right now for that, but more details will come. So one-to-one stu-, you know, device.
Coming in. Each student will have it there.
One-to-one, right. It's one device for each student. So one device for one student.
Okay.
Right. So, but we'll present more of that. But right now, we wanted to be able to incorporate something into the base budget, but we'll provide more detail for you.
Just for the middle school or the middle school airline?
Middle school.
Right. So, so we, what we really wanted to be thoughtful about was making sure that the school committee got a chance to hear what we're even thinking about first. So it's, there's a couple of possibilities that we'll put forward. Usually, Judy, though, when you have a one-to-one model in a system, every kid has a, a computer assigned to them, a lap-, a laptop or a Chromebook or a, an iPad. There's a lot of different variations. What we've been using is a bring-your-own device. Unfortunately, with the bring-your-own-device model, not everyone brings their own device and it creates a lot of inconsistency. So that's a lot of what we've been talking about. But we didn't want to get too far out ahead of it.
Yeah. But, but, so, and it would, it would enable kids then to utilize those devices more regularly within the course of study in the classroom, which is probably a good idea.
Well, that's what we'll get into when we come back in January. So it's really, this is, this is very preliminary, but we know, since we're building budgets, we had to put a hold of it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So for pre-reading, we did include in the regional school committee's budgets the five-year technology plan because of, you'll find snippets in there where it speaks towards that. And I think if you have time to look at that prior to the presentation in January, I'll put you in a better starting position to hear what Beth and the director of IT have to say. So I did provide that for you so that you had time to re-familiarize yourself with it because we haven't had it in the budget book for the last couple of years. The next section you have is your assessment calculation, which we did walk through a little bit during the budget workshop that we had. So this is just how we get to where we are right now. Obviously, every time we do a budget revision, I will update the assessment calculation. So this will be version one and we'll continue to build on this as, as we continue. The next section is, as Andrew mentioned, the 10-year enrollment history and the five-year projections. As you can see, our enrollment for fiscal year '20 is 1,205. If you go back to your books from last year, we projected 1,203. So that's why we're feeling very, pretty confident in our three-year projection percentages. I think the projection percentages, I think, actually get more stable at the high school level because there is some, you know, there's families who hate to move their children in the older grades. So I think that's actually why we see even more accuracy at the, at this level.
Nice. So there's something easier at the region.
Yeah.
Could you explain the, the three-year versus the one-year, please?
Exactly. So the three-year projection rate is taking the in-migration, out-migration over three years and averaging it. So it's your average of what you're seeing happening. We started taking the one-year projection rate too, just to make sure that, if you remember, the elementary... remember, at the elementaries, there seemed to be an uptick that if we weren't looking at one year only and we're using the three years, we weren't taking advantage of knowing that maybe there was a bigger swing. So we started showing both. But what we've been able to do over the last three years has proved that the three-year rate's actually pretty good. But it's all, it gives you a viewpoint too of what happens in the year, in the particular year. So you can see that sixth grade actually had a higher increase than normal because the one-year rate's 110%. That means that your fifth-grade class is growing by 10% before it gets to sixth grade. And our three-year average is 104%. And you can see that once you get to the high school level, the three-year pretty much is the one-year. And that's where I'd say that sort of stabilizes because you hate to move kids at that level. But I think this is really a helpful chart to look at, and you can see what we were talking about, the swings, that even though our total is sort of stays the same, it's swinging between how many students are in our middle school versus how many students are in our high school. And that's what we've been looking at for staffing situations.
We also, as we go along, we start to share actual sections at the middle and high school as we get closer to February.
So in February, we bring forward any new tweaks that we need for staffing and the retirement impact. We will give you the class list too, so then we'll substantiate what we say we're doing for staffing. You can actually see.
You can see the rationale.
Okay.
The other thing that's in your enrollment is I share with you what Dover and Sherburne are seeing in their out-of-district so that you can see the students that are at regional age that are out-of-district. Both towns have seen of substantial decreases in the out-of-district, which actually helps the budget building process for all of us. And, but it gives you an idea of by grade level, where how many are in middle school, high school, high school and 12th grade, because those, most of those students, we assume will graduate the following year, and then you're 12-plus. So I think this is good information for you just to be aware of, to look at it both at Dover and Sherburne. And as you can see in our, actually, I see some of the reports are different between the two schools, but you can actually see the volatility in this budget line item by looking at the roll forward and seeing the changes. So I do think it's important for the regional group to understand that. So your fifth packet is the capital, which we will bring forward to you in January. And as we continue also, I think some of the other reports that we mentioned in the cover letter that will come forward is a summary of staffing. Remember, I give you an FTE report by category, and also the summary of the grants, which is another piece of funding that supports your budget that's not in the operating. And it's important to know those because if we ever lost those grants, you can see what they're supporting and what we potentially have to find room for in our operating budget. So once we have those all settled, those will be some additions that we bring to you also in January.
It's in January. All right. So some's in January and some's in February.
Just to give you a little perspective, because I do think that we weren't collaborating fleet with the two towns when we built the budget. The Sherburne budget that was just presented in November, they had a, and you don't have to write all this down, just tell me. The in-district increase there, we're looking at like a 4.3% increase, but overall, because of the activity you saw in out-of-district, they're looking at a negative 0.38 budget decrease from '20 to '21. And Dover was seeing similar where they had a 1.26% increase in their in-district, but taking into effect their out-of-district, they actually have a 1.68 negative decrease in their budgets from '20 to '21.
Because of out-of-district, of moving kids in the district?
That's the impact.
So that's been a huge impact.
It has. Now, it doesn't fall to our bottom line, but it certainly falls to the... Exactly. Because I think we have been looking at the three pools as we try to, to be up the fun. So I think it's, I just wanted you guys to know that it looks that there are some favorable things happening at the elementary. Last year, we were able to share some money that the region didn't need to help balance Sherburne's budget. So, you know, it can go both ways.
Are we, now that we have our new director of student services in place after we did all that, are we going to try and do some, some metrics to track sort of, is this having an impact on our kids needing, you know, because the goal, I think, was to be able to have people more in-district than out-of-district? Do we have that planned in, I said, inarticulately?
We can, we can identify, well, we wouldn't identify students, but we can say that we know of certain students receiving services and programs that we didn't have in the past. But it's really, really difficult to say. They'd all be in that program, or if we, if we didn't have that program, would they all leave? It's because these are frequently team decisions, family decisions, individuals involved. So it's, it's pretty inexact.
Okay.
But I do think that we can generate data that shows how many kids are accessing the programs that we're adding at the region and also at the elementary schools.
Yeah. I just, I, it would be interesting if there were some, and it doesn't even have to be a financial quantitative effect, but some sort of quantitative, tative, evidence-based effect that what we've, the new things we've put into place are actually having a positive effect.
We have talked about having Kate back later.
And she will be back.
It's actually on the January meeting.
She's on the January agenda.
So we can certainly ask some of those things.
So as, as we have said, this is preliminary. We will be gaining more information. Right now, this is all based on, if you look at your assessment calculation, we're using fiscal year '20, chapter 70 and 71 numbers. We're using fiscal year '20 minimum local contribution numbers. So as those come out in late to mid-January, or mid to late January, we will start updating that too. So this is just a good starting point. It allows the towns to have a placeholder in their budget. So we are asking tonight for you just to approve the initial number that we have brought forward so that we feel comfortable sharing those with the town.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve, we'll call it the High Water?
Preliminary.
Preliminary budget edit. What's the num? Is that that much?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor? Opposed? No, we're all good. Thank you so much.
So you have the details that have time? Yeah. Let me just say, so in January, if you have more specific questions about the line items, that's a great time we can have a discussion about that. But for each of the meetings between now and your first meeting in March, when you have your open hearing, that will be discussion time for the budget. And hopefully, each meeting we come forward with will have a new piece of information that we know is a firm data point that we'll just keep moving forward.
Would you prefer technical questions via email through?
Yeah. It could be said, and that, that works too if you want to accumulate the questions and sometimes then I can prepare and bring, bring the answers to the meeting.
Well, if it's not even for discussion, if it's more just, can you explain what this is?
Yeah, then Anne can make that call and send it to me and whatever.
Yeah, if it's an explanation thing, that's good. But also, if you have that question, chances are somebody else does.
Well, and perhaps when the, if those are being answered, you can just send the answers to everyone.
Yeah. Yeah. We can figure that one out. And it's worked well in the past, having sort of a, passing on, there's a list of questions that aren't explanations.
Right.
And then Dawn prepares it. It goes much more quickly.
Right.
All right. Just really quickly, we need to vote on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes for November 5th for the field trip and to accept a donation. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second. All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. And you'll know there's communications, items for the January meeting. We've got the town reports, which our illustrious vice chair, Maggie Shum, will be, will be writing for us. For those who are new to this, we'll have a chance to preview it prior to the January 7th meeting, and then we will vote at that meeting. Okay? There'll be more info on that in the new year. And can I vote, hear a motion to adjourn at 7:02?
Oh, nice job. So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you all for making...
Thank you, guys.